Okay, good morning, everybody. This is the February 25th, 2020 hearing for the Health Committee. I'm Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chairman of the Committee. Also in attendance, we have Councilmember Henry representing the 4th District, Councilmember Clark representing the 14th District, Councilmember Reisinger representing the 10th District. We've also been joined by Nina Themless from the Mayor's Office. And to my right, we have Marguerite Curran, Committee Staff Member, and Representative from the Health Department who we're going to hear from. Oh, and Scott Davis, sorry. Scott Davis from the President's Office has joined us as well. Today, we have two tobacco-related hearings. The first will be a legislative oversight hearing on tobacco enforcement, prevention, use, and cessation. And there'll be a presentation from Ms. Kamala Green. And then, that will be followed by a hearing on Council Bill 18-0311, nicotine replacement therapy products sale and distribution. And, yeah. So with that, we're going to jump right in. Committee members, if you don't mind, Ms. Green is going to do the presentation sitting down today. But with the same level of enthusiasm that she always brings.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kamala Green. I am the Director of Health Promotion and Disease Prevention here at the Baltimore City Health Department. And so this morning, I'm going to briefly speak to you in reference to our programming around tobacco enforcement, prevention, use, and cessation. So in 2000, the Maryland General Assembly actually created the Cigarette Restitution Fund, and that fund derived from the Master Tobacco Settlement Agreement. So in each of the 24 jurisdictions around the state, it gave monies to create tobacco use, prevention, cessation programs, cancer prevention, education, screening programs, cancer research programs, and just a number of meetings around cancer and tobacco and health coalitions. Here in the city, we were able to establish three different programs from that money in the last 20 years. So I'm going to briefly talk to you this morning about Tobacco-Free Baltimore, which is a program that goes into our schools starting from pre-K to 12th grade for students in Baltimore City. So we have a partnership with Baltimore City Public School System, where we go in to address tobacco and tobacco-related products. And so that would also include vaping, e-cigarettes, as well as cigarettos, which commonly is used by our young people here in the city. All of those lesson plans are evidence-based, and they're customized for use. We predominantly go into middle schools and high schools. So as you can tell, we set out a goal for FY19. And so we did health communications about e-cigarettes, vaping, and tobacco-related products, as well as cigarettes through our Baltimore City Health Department newsletter. There were eight of them. We did 16,400 persons through community events throughout the city with 5,850 pertaining to youth around electronic cigarette smoking devices. We partnered with one organization around tobacco control, and I will talk a little bit about that later. We had 32 events. And we partnered with Wrexham Parks to also make that education available for 20 Wrexham Parks sites. We partnered with 11 schools here in Baltimore City. The next one is tobacco cessation. And so I really want to talk about the fact that we have a couple of partnerships. But prior to coming to the Health Department, what we noticed, and I'll take you to the map, is that our city really is one that a lot of people smoke. And so we wanted to be strategic in how we really looked at that. And one piece of looking at that was to look at maps and to find out where we have the most smoking-related deaths, as well as where we see the most usage of tobacco. So we use the Maryland Quit Line, which is free to the entire state of Maryland, to make referrals, and they can receive NRT, which is nicotine replacement therapy, as well as counseling. And then we have four workshops that we do around the city in different locations to our citizens around the ability to smoke, knowing your triggers, handling stress, as well as what nicotine does to your body and the impact smoking has on your body. The next PowerPoint slide is that we do have a partnership with Inna Pratt Library, where you can just literally go and drop in and to participate in a smoking workshop, as well as a cessation program of your choice. So right now, we're in four different locations. However, we are also in our own Baltimore City Health Department location on Fayette Street, as well as privately-owned locations where we specifically go out each week to mental health and substance abuse programs to provide that same training. So over the course of FY19, we were able to interact with 1,800 folks, 18 pregnant women, 100 for mental health. We were able to make 227 referrals to the Maryland Quit Line, and we participated in 21 locations. So I just briefly want to talk about while our number is so low for smoking cessation to pregnant women, we all know in this room that people do not self-report that they are using any type of drug or any type of tobacco or tobacco-related product if they are smoking due to Child Protective Services and the mandate to report. So in most cases, that 18 was because women are located at a location where we provide smoking cessation services, where they've already reported that they are pregnant. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay. Okay, so on the next slide, you will see the intensified red-orange, where you will see the prevalence of current smoking among adult. And this is only adult-related smoking. So you will see, we have strategically put those in locations, and those are where our Inna Pratt Library locations are. So we also do a lot of work in the community so that people understand that we are available. Even if people say, "I don't want to be part of a group," they have our information, and flyers are out to be able to assist them with one-on-one time. So the next slide is tobacco enforcement. And tobacco enforcement is, we conduct visits to our tobacco retailers. We utilize enforcement officers to talk about Maryland laws. The compliance checks are conducted to ensure that no sales of tobacco-related products are to persons under 21. So in October of 2019, the legislation passed that we are now no longer available to sell nicotine, tobacco, or tobacco-related products to anyone over the age of 21. So everyone under the age of 21 has to show ID in order to purchase, not unless you have a military exemption. Part of that is that we did not change our ability to enforce. We still are using young people under the age of 18. And I hate to say this, but as of this date, we are already at 100 and some citations that we have issued because tobacco retailers are still selling to minors, well, under 21. The other piece of it is, I'll take you to FY18, 19, and 20 of how many citations we issued. So you will see around the map that we equally out, we randomly sample where we're going to go in the city to issue citations. We do that based on either 311 calls or constituent calls coming in to the Mayor's Office, or even calls coming in to us. We do provide, as a result of that, we do provide neighborhood relations, police neighborhood council meetings, where we go to talk about the laws, talk about stores in their particular neighborhood that may be, have violated that law. We work with the Baltimore City Police Department to assist them with perhaps making a more stringent response to the law. So we've had an incident in northeast Baltimore where a store, even after we cited that store, still continued to sell cigarettes or cigarettes-related products, nicotine replacement, I mean, I'm sorry, tobacco or tobacco-related products to people under 21. We work with that major in that police district to close that store down for a period of time so that the neighborhood also could feel the reprieve of issues that were happening at that store. So when you are not compliant, we try to issue out that information to each of our police districts to notify them that this is a store that continues to violate the law in that particular way. So they are issued a civil citation. We do not have, we are not issuing criminal citations out to our tobacco retailers, and the fines are up to $500 each time that they come in. So if they are, if they continue to be cited, then we refer that business over to the State Comptroller's Office, who will evaluate them and then make a determination whether or not they should be, their license should be revoked. We do have businesses here in our city who are operating without a license. And so that information is also turned over to our State Comptroller. The next slide is just how many citations we have issued in FY19. So in FY19, we issued 50. We did over 1,100 educational visits and 615 compliance checks. So the educational visits really are so that we don't have tobacco retailers saying, "I don't know about the law. How can you issue me a citation when I don't know that I'm not supposed to be selling to anyone 21 and under?" And so we have an officer who goes out to each of our retailers. We have about 1,600 retailers that sell tobacco or tobacco-related products here in the city. Any questions?
One, I just want to thank you again for going above and beyond to be with us today. I know you're a little under the weather, so thank you again. I think Councilmember Clark, you got a question? Okay. I did have, sorry. You mentioned one thing I did want to follow up on was the pregnant women, the mandatory reporting piece. Can you talk a little, I just see, sorry. Help us understand, I guess, the logic there. I understand why you would need to report, but if it's obvious that only of all of the folks we know smoke, only 18 are coming forward. Can you talk, I guess, efforts to reform that at the General Assembly? Or if there are any? I mean, I guess it's a tough one to say we shouldn't mandatory report or come forward on, but I don't know.
So it's several bills in the General Assembly this session related to tobacco. And I mean, probably several hundred. I've submitted testimony to several hundred, it feels like. But the key to this really is eliminating access to our young people and to those under 21. So we really don't have the results of seeing what that age differential has given us yet. Because right now, we still are seeing that our tobacco retailers are still selling to young people under 21. So they're still selling to kids who are even under 18. And so let me really talk about that, because I think that we are under the assumption that while retailers know what the law is, do they feel pressure from the community to do something alternative? And so in many of those cases, a lot of retailers feel like they are taunted or bullied by the community if in fact, they do not sell to those young people under 21. And at the time, when we really have our officers out, they are talking to retailers, in many instances, they feel like if they don't, they will destroy their property, they will destroy the store. And so we are working in tandem with Baltimore City Police Department to make sure that that does not happen. So part of that is that we've had conversations with the majors to see if in fact, a business does feel intimidated by the young people or by people who cannot purchase tobacco or tobacco-related products. And so what we do to assist the police department is to identify the stores who are noncompliant. And then the police major then comes in to talk to that business to say, "Okay, what is going on? How can we assist you?" So in that case where we had one store closed, was that the police department sat out in the parking lot of that store to kind of monitor the activities of that store. So that is one issue. So I'll talk about pregnant women. So we do have partnerships with people who are seeing pregnant women or even the inclination that they could be pregnant. And in many times, those women feel a stigma will be placed on them if they identify with being pregnant and they're still smoking. And so they won't identify. So we could have seen multiple of women who were really pregnant, but because of the stigma that would be placed on them, we just would not have that information. Obviously, if they're showing, we can make that assumption that they are pregnant, but other than that, we would not know. And so we work with Crystalis House, which is an organization that does assist pregnant women with substance abuse. And a piece of that is offering that class to them.
Awesome, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, with there being no questions, and we were briefly joined by Council President Scott, but it looks like he stepped right back out. So maybe he'll come back. All right, so there's no vote for this. Thank you for all that you do, all that your staff do. So the...
I usually do this for my staff, they're going to kill me. But I do want my staff to stand up. So they're here this morning. They make everything possible. So Leslie, and Letta, and McKay, they are the staff that go out in the community and make that work happen. So just to give them a shout-out this morning, thanks.
Just for the record, the Health Committee loves the Health Department staff, all of them. All right. All right, so the, yeah, so we're going to conclude this hearing. And we will start the second hearing on Council Bill 18-0311, nicotine replacement therapy products sale and distribution. Do I have to read that right now? Okay, all right. All right, we will read the purpose clause. Okay. All right, so the purpose of this bill is requesting certain retailers to sell nicotine replacement therapy products. As written, the bill mandates certain retail display packaging requirements, certain employers and facilities to offer nicotine replacement therapy products at no cost. We will revisit that later. Defining certain terms, providing a special effective date, establishing certain penalties in generally related to the sale and distribution of nicotine replacement therapy products. As the sponsor of this bill, the intention of it is to expand access and equity to nicotine replacement products. I want to thank the staff at the Health Department for coming forward with this, I think, excellent idea to address a very serious concern, which is access. In the last hearing, we heard that there were 1,600 retailers. I don't have the number of pharmacies in front of me, but I'm certain there are not 1,600 of them in the city of Baltimore, which is primarily where citizens would get access to nicotine replacement products. And so this was an idea put forward to increase access and equity. When I think about my district, I can only think of three or four pharmacies in a district that spans most of the outer west side of the city and does not have a lot of transit access. And so for me, this is, I think, an excellent idea to put forward to help my constituents gain access to therapy, or gain access to treatment, with the idea being that they will also seek therapy. We do know that that is one of the more effective methods, but we have to increase that access first and meet people where they are, and then build from there. We do have amendments, but we will discuss those after the agency reports. And so we will start with the, I know Law Department has a lot to say, so I'm going to go with the others and close out there so then we can just ride right into the amendments, if that's okay. So Baltimore Development Corporation favorable. I don't see anyone here from BDC. Environmental Control Board, you stand by your report?
We have no objection.
No objection. Health Department?
Stand by our report.
Okay. Law Department?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ashley Brown, for the Law Department. We stand by our report. We raised several issues that could be potential challenges. This is uncharted territory. So it's impossible to say with certainty how a court would rule on some of these issues. We raised the issues. If you'd like me to elaborate on any of them, I'm happy to do so. The only requirement that we had, or our amendment that we advised, is to remove the requirement that the medication-assisted treatment facilities provide these NRT products, because we feel pretty strongly that we're preempted. The other issues are defensible, and the bill is vulnerable, but it's defensible. And again, if you want me to elaborate on any of those issues, I can. But otherwise, we stand by our report as favorable with amendment.
Are there questions for the Law Department? Or would you want additional explanation?
Well, so are you saying that, I read your report, but it was two days ago, that the one thing, in the Law Department report, the emphasis was finally the requirement that medication-assisted treatment facilities provide, et cetera, et cetera, is problematic? That's what you're talking about? But then you mentioned prior a couple of other things that you say, "Well, it's that one that's the problem."
That's correct. Well, they could be challenged. The other issues are relevant in our analysis. They're vulnerabilities of the bill, but we could defend them.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, can you just summarize those other two?
Sure, sure. So anytime you're placing a burden on commerce by requiring retailers to sell certain products and do certain things, you're arguably burdening commerce. And so when you're burdening commerce with legislation, a court would balance the burden with the benefits. And since this is a new program, and we don't have any guidelines, we can't say with certainty that it's been proven that the placement of NRT products in these stores would make people buy them and stop smoking. It's certainly a viable argument, and we could defend it, and I think it's, you know, defensible. That's the first. And perhaps the largest. The second is a potential ORISA preemption issue with requiring employers to provide NRT products to their employees upon request. ORISA's preemption is so broad. Anything even looking like a benefit can be preempted. So even though this isn't part of a plan, per se, if there's any relation to health benefits, and I know it seems crazy, but that's the way the courts have gone. And that was the other issue. And again, I think it's defensible, because it's not part of a plan, and we could defend that. But I just, as part of our analysis, we have to raise these issues so that you're aware of them in case it's challenged.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. Councilmember Henry?
I'm sorry, I feel like I'm asking you to repeat yourself for the third time, but I'm trying to make certain that I'm wrapping my head around this properly. If, is it a bigger issue that the bill requires tobacco stores to sell smoking cessation products? Or is it a bigger issue that the bill specifies that the products be packaged in the smallest quantity available to the retailer? Or are they equally problematic?
I would argue that requiring the sale of a particular product would be a larger burden than providing it in a certain kind of packaging. And again, those requirements, while they burden commerce, there is a viable benefit. There's an argument that they would provide a benefit. So we could defend it. And because there's no case on point, because this is a new program, it's uncharted territory, we can't say with certainty how a court would fall.
Would it, would it make things better in any way if we had like a five-year sunset or something on it, and we added something in the recitals to make it clear that part of the purpose is to gather data?
Right. I think that anything that would lessen the burden and make your legislative goals more clear would help the bill, absolutely.
I think it's a good idea.
Go in and take our chances and see what happens before we put a five-year limit on something, because, because basically...
You want to?
Once, it takes so long for things to catch on that something like this is really important. And if we, I'd rather just go on in and see how it comes out if someone challenges it, and come back and fix it then, but at least get going. And then if, period. So because if things change, if we voluntarily put a limit on something that people are just getting used to, then we have to start all over again five years from now, and nobody's going to remember that it expired until somebody, a year later, says something about it. And then all that getting used to things goes away, and we have to start all over again. It just takes so long for new things to be, to get out there, because it's really all about word of mouth. And finally get out there, and some people enforcing things, then the word, that word gets out, and then in a couple of years, people get it and take it for granted. So I would just, I'm not trying to, like, I'm not a lawyer. I'm an English teacher. I'm, yeah, I was. My real job, my mother said. So that's my opinion just about the way the world works. Let's take our chances. We'll learn something. We can set a model. We're setting a new practice. And if we get, you know, if we have to come back and fix it up a little, fine. Then we have a good model that survived. That's what we're doing with pesticides. We chose a model that survived the court cases, and we're using that.
So my response would be, I have no opposite. I think sunsets are, I don't think they're bad policy. I don't have an amendment for that moving forward. But if any of my colleagues want to, I do intend to try and move the bill forward today, but if...
No, let's not.
Second reader.
Let's go one way or the other. We could write an amendment.
Mr. Chair, you know that my only point in asking the questions, I just try to make the Law Department as comfortable as possible.
Oh, yeah. Totally understand.
Oh, I don't. Like the opposite.
So we've been joined by Councilmember Slyfer and Councilmember Reisinger, members of the committee. Councilmember Slyfer?
Yeah, so I definitely want some more clarity in this. I'm sorry I'm late. I was out in the back on the phone dealing with a constituent issue. But in over here, you know, just a couple of things stick out. It says about a large employer. It says employs 50 or more full-time employees in the city of Baltimore. So I'm just curious, as to last night, we had a bill, and large employers were defined as 25 people. Did the economy like skyrocket overnight? Or what happened between last night and today that large employers are now 50 or more? But yesterday, they were 25 or more.
So Councilmember, I'll mention a couple of things. One, there are two amendments on your desk. The second of which strikes out large employer and medical, medication and treatment, assisted treatment facilities from the bill. So they would no longer apply to the requirements of this bill. I would also note that this bill was submitted two years ago, so the economy has changed since then. But regardless, I have offered amendments to my own bill to strike that out due to concerns and feedback that we received from the Law Department about the legality of such a requirement, and, yeah.
Okay, I mean, so, you know, I hear the answer. I got you, and I'm glad it struck out. I mean, but the economy has changed in the past two years, and it's changed for the better. And so 50 employees or more was considered a large business two years ago, 25 or more being considered a large employer now would have meant that the economy would have gotten worse. But that's just a side point. All right, thanks for answering that question.
No problem. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Run it in case we end up with the socialist government. We want it to be as big as we can make them, right?
I have no comment on any of that. I'm happy to have another conversation about the economy, and the state of the economy. I would also note that we do, on your desk, committee members, there is a letter from the Cancer Action Network, an affiliate of American Cancer Society, would note there are opposed to the bill. However, I would also note that we had several meetings with them and the American Heart Association over the last two years to try and find a middle ground. We also met with the Retailers Association. I don't think they submitted any testimony, but to get their feedback, and they had concerns, obviously, about the large employer, and how do we define a large employer? But, so based on those conversations, we did address the large employer and clinic mandate. But I feel strongly that this is the definition of what innovation looks like. The root of the argument put forth by the American Cancer Society is, in my personal opinion, a little bit short-sighted in that, like, there has to be room for innovation. There has to be room for being the first to try something. And frankly, based on the conversation we just had, like, if we get it wrong, or there are issues that we can address as a legislative body, but... are issues that we can address as a legislative body, but we have an opportunity before us to be the first in the nation to try and increase access in addition to the hard work that the Health Department is already doing on this issue, and this is a supplement to that work and that outreach and that education to connect people to help in a variety of different ways. Councilmember Clark, you had a question or statement?
Well, yeah, we just, we're just learning that ceasefire organization, because it's peer-to-peer, young people going out, calling off violence for a weekend periodically throughout the year is very effective, actually, in reducing violence for the period in which they declare a peace. That's peer pressure. It works. And it's suggested by the people that did that study that peer pressure is at the heart of the violence itself on our streets. That if that ceasefire kind of peer pressure enlarges and expands, so will the peer pressure not to kill. Okay. So I'm a smoker, sad to say. And so if I go in to buy cigarettes, and I've got this, these products there, I'm going to feel that pressure. I promise you. And the opportunity, because I'm not going looking for this stuff.
Correct.
But if I'm going to buy my cigarettes, and right next to it is like these products that say, hey, quit, I'm going to try them. I really am, because I don't have time to go to some meeting several times a month to get off smoking. I don't have, if I had that time, I wouldn't be smoking. So basically, I definitely think it's a peer pressure thing that will affect people like me and give me a chance, well, how much is that anyway? Let me give it a whirl, and give me a pack while you're at it. All right? It's peer pressure. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. I don't believe, Councilmember Slifer?
Can you just clarify for me? Again, I'm sorry, you probably covered this already, the parts where it's offered for free versus just having to offer it. Can you just explain that?
So that's been taken out. So the initial idea was that if a large employer had a designated smoking area, they would have to, and the same applies for methadone or drug treatment facilities, that they would still have to supply their products for free. After feedback from law and the retailers advocacy groups, we decided to strike those provisions out. So it would be offered at a cost at any store that sells tobacco products, no free products.
Okay, so every store that sells tobacco products would have to have anything, so it could be like the gum or...
Yeah. And we said the minimum allowable dosage, because some of the feedback we heard is that it can be expensive for a retailer to have to sell like the 80-pack. I don't know what, I don't smoke, but they come in large quantities, they come in small quantities. We're saying, look, you can offer a small quantity if you'd like, or you can offer more if you'd like.
And can you elaborate also on, like, how close it needs to be to each other? Because you know, when you go into these stores, and I'm not a smoker, so I don't, you know, but I see when you walk in, there's, you know, the whole wall is, you know, behind the gas station or something, is cigarettes. How close and everything does it need to be to that? Or does the gas station, per se, just have to physically have...
So the language we have in there is prominently displayed near the products. We didn't put a distance requirement in there, but prominent, I think...
Near, and near?
Near, near the products, prominently displayed is what we have.
Gotcha. And so does it, does it say anything about it having to be visible, other than just prominent?
Displayed.
Displayed?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, because you walk in a gas station, the whole kiosk thing is only eight feet by eight feet, so the cigarettes are obviously the most prominently displayed item.
So we're asking like, also prominently?
So do they got to like tape a pack of the stuff to the top of like the cigarette shelf to show that they have that also?
I mean, I think the Health Department can maybe want to weigh in on like the, how you guys define prominent, I guess typically, but I would imagine, I mean, there was obviously some discretion, and the idea is to get them to do it the right way. And so when inspectors are going in, I guess we can talk through like the implementation of it, but without, yeah, we don't, hopefully they won't tape it next to it, but a prominent display, in the same way that they prominently displayed the cigarettes, to your point, is the intention of the bill. I don't know.
Does any other place, like any other city or county locally, have a similar law to this?
We'd be the first.
Be the first. Okay, because I mean, I just, I don't know, I'm not a smoker, so I don't know, you know, I can't speak on behalf of what is in smokers' minds, but I would assume that the fact that when you look at a cigarette pack, it has like a picture of a skeleton, and it says it's going to kill you, if that's not enough to get people to stop, like, I just, you know, I just find it hard to believe that all of a sudden, because the store happens to sell it, because plenty of stores and like the larger ones sell both kinds of products, that this, having it available at a gas station, that all of a sudden, somebody who goes in for a pack of cigarettes is going to say, oh, you know what? Instead of the cigarettes, I'm going to buy this replacement therapy products instead.
So in the earlier hearing, are you done? Sorry, I mean, interrupt.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Early hearing, we were given a statistic that there are 1,600 retailers that sell tobacco products. I can provide you with the number of pharmacies across the city of Baltimore, but I can almost assure you they're not 1,600 of them. I can only count four in my entire district. So the idea isn't so much about, I mean, as we heard from one of our colleagues, the peer pressure is there. From my perspective, it was also about increasing access to those products, when we know that there are not, like I said, in my district, there are four pharmacies. None of the corner stores that sell tobacco products in my district, outside of those sort of like pharmacy slash something else kind of stores, even sell these products at all. And we know that a number of residents in West Baltimore, and both of our districts are transit-dependent, as we don't have a circulator or anywhere else. So getting around to a pharmacy is pretty difficult. Getting access to cigarettes is pretty easy. And that's pretty reflective in the statistics in the packet that you have around the amount of enforcement on sales to minors. The number of educational visits is over 1,100, 600 compliance checks. So we know that the problem, I mean, access is pretty easy, is what we know, but we also know that through the outreach work done by the Health Department, conversations we've had with these workers outside of this hearing, that there are inequities in the location and access to NRTs. And the idea being put forth is to increase that access to, at the same rate that you can get the product that's frankly going to kill you.
All right, and what's the, and I don't know what, how any of these products, like, are packaged or sold, but what's like the cost differential between a pack of cigarettes and one of these replacement therapy products?
So it's probably half in relation, so in the General Assembly right now, there is a bill to increase the tax on cigarettes. So the average rate of a pack of cigarettes is probably about $10 to $12. And so just having access to a nicotine replacement is probably half that cost. So the other piece of it is, is that when we talk about access, you're talking about 1,600 retailers, you're talking about probably 120 pharmacies located in the city of Baltimore for 640-some thousand people who are residents here. And so per tobacco retailer in our city, there are 20 retailers to 10,000 residents. And so that is why the bill is innovative, because we need for people to go in. And so in cities like New York and California, where that has been the precedence of really limiting access to not only young people, but also the decline of smoking adults, was to really make sure that we provided access to the ability to quit smoking. And so the only way that we could do that here in the city of Baltimore, we had several discussions at the Health Department and with the advocates, is our ability to make sure that we created access to the tools for people to be able to stop.
All right, so how many, from this research and statistics, how many smokers would we say we have in Baltimore City? Like people?
Councilman, it's in the PowerPoint from the presentation that happened just prior to this hearing.
There's also a heat map as well. You can sort of see where...
Yeah, I saw the heat map. How many people, how many people smoke in Baltimore City?
So it's not a, it's not a, it's a...
It's not a fiscal number where it's actually, you can see on the map, and our epidemiologist is here, she is saying it's about over 100,000 who are smokers.
Yeah, I'll wait.
I don't feel so bad. Peer pressure.
So it sounds like an estimated over 100,000 smokers in Baltimore? Is that what the data shows?
We...
Could you, could you come up and use the mic? And introduce yourself, sorry.
So, hi, my name's Darcy Phelan Emrick. I'm the chief epidemiologist for the Health Department, and it's estimated that 102,000 adults in Baltimore City currently smoke cigarettes. That's as of 2017, which is the most recent year for data.
And so when, I guess from the history and speaking to the different groups, obviously making it accessible, I understand the benefits of that. So does that mean that you find that the fact that it becomes accessible and somebody has it, and, you know, that they can easily buy it, just as easily as buying cigarettes, that by starting on one of these replacement therapies, that they'll then, you know, quit smoking? Like, is there any data to support that having it right there and them trying it will be what they need to get, to get moving?
Councilman, I actually want to take a moment, if we could, to revisit Councilman Henry's proposed amendment from earlier, because he actually addressed a portion of that point. This is a novel idea that's been put forward. So from a data perspective, there's not jurisdictional to jurisdiction data that we could show that says having this available in this location in other cities or other jurisdictions resulted in this type of reduction. Councilman Henry, a few minutes ago, proposed an amendment that would look at potentially sunsetting the bill and tying a data gathering requirement to it that would provide a, that would allow us to collect that and provide that back. That, that's a way to get to the point, I think, that you're trying to make there, and that would also make, it sounds like the Law Department's burden in defending the bill much easier. I want to actually revisit the Sugar Sweetened Beverage Default Option Bill this council passed two years ago was similar in the way that it balanced the need to address health concerns with the potential for the bill drawing lawsuit challenges in court. Rather than addressing a sugar sweetened beverage issue from a tax perspective, the council addressed it from a default option perspective on children's menus, and it, to date, I believe, has avoided legal challenge. In any case, the amendment that Councilman Henry seems to be thinking through might get to your point of data collection while also addressing the Law Department's concerns around the burden versus benefit argument.
Right. So that's not really where I was getting at and my concern. I guess, look, I don't, I wish nobody smoked. I'd be more than happy to see all the tobacco companies go out of business, right? I don't want, you know, I don't want cigarettes around my kids, I don't want them in the stores. That's all, all fine and good. However, what, I guess where I'm a little hung up is, is that, you know, we're talking about 100,000 people in the city, right? Which, we're saying that a sixth of the entire city's population are smokers. I'm not going to debate whether or not that's accurate or not, I don't know either way, so I'm just going to take it at face value. But what we're saying here is that also, that if a pack of cigarettes is $10 to $12 apiece, and a replacement therapy is half of that, so to get some, get a replacement therapy in your hand is between $5 and $6, what I would say is that if it's, if it's about access and about convenience and about making sure people start to, you know, try this replacement to see if that works, why don't we just run a pilot program through the Health Department, spend $5 or $6 apiece, so that's $500, $600,000, and let's mail each one of these 100,000 smokers a nicotine replacement therapy product and see, see if that works? Instead of telling the businesses to, you know, you guys have to bear the cost of our, of our pilot and our test study that we want to try out, and it's a good idea to, to anything that will drive down smoking, I'm for that. However, we're telling that burden that it's got to be on all these stores and other places and the businesses. They're the ones who got a, they have to cover the cost of a pilot program essentially that we want to test out. We have a Health Department, you guys do incredible work, you guys are very resourceful, you come up with all types of grants, I think you're one of the, you know, best return-on-investment agencies the city has. A lot of your money comes from outside the city. You know, I love you guys, and I think that you guys could easily come up with a way to come up with this money from other, other ways to, to straight up go ahead and just mail all these people. Maybe include it when DPW sends, you know, they send those brochures and all that other stuff in the mail with your water bill, it's hard to find the water bill, you know, and all the other paraphernalia that comes in there. Why not just leave out the newsletter for a month and include a nicotine replacement product in it? Okay. Would you like to answer that, Mr. Emmerich?
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yeah, the question is, why don't you guys take the pilot program and spend $500,000 or $600,000 and mail these 100,000 smokers in Baltimore City nicotine replacement products, which, and instead, and let's, let's see how that works. And if we see that it's working, then maybe we come back and revisit and have some type of legislation to amplify that. But right now, this legislation is putting that burden on these businesses, and these aren't big businesses. You go to like some of these gas stations, they're barely getting by. And so instead of us forcing them to take the burden, why don't we take the lead? We want to be pioneers. No other place is doing it. Let's, let's take the lead on this, and let's, you know, let's, let's end tobacco smoking in Baltimore City through the Health Department.
We'd be happy to have that conversation, Councilman.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll set that meeting up with you.
Okay.
All right. So thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to make a motion to move the amendments.
Second.
Okay. So motion made by myself, seconded by Councilmember Clark.
It's been approved by the Law Department.
Yeah, we...
All right. Burnett, yes? Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to, the amendments have passed. I'd like to, is there, is there a motion to move the amended bill?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the bill as amended.
Second.
Okay. Burnett, I am a yes. Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer?
No.
All right. The motion has passed. The committee will recommend a favorable report for Council Bill 18-0311. The bill will be placed on second reader on March 9th, 2020. The full council will review and take a vote. If there is no other business, committee is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, McGee. Paul, on health for a minute?